All right. Good evening. The time being 7:00 PM. All members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. Just for anybody who didn't see the agenda, Agenda Item D, 792 Main Street. The applicant has requested to continue to our next meeting in August, August 19th. So if you're here for that, you do not need to stick around. Nothing will be done on that matter. Otherwise, we'll go to Agenda Item A, which is approval of minutes for April 8th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 8th, 2024.
I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I wasn't here for that one, so I'll stay and just take the four votes. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports, Administrative Actions. Anybody with any committee reports that they wish to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All set. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Two Town Planners Report. Ms. Latta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to take this a little out of order, just in the interest of one of the, item number two possibly conduct, you know, causing some discussion. First on the horizon, the only one new public hearing scheduled for our next August 19th meeting at the time, 134 Salem Road for a family suite special permit. The application deadline is this Thursday, so something else could trickle in between now and then, but it looks like it may be a rather light agenda for August, which I'm sure no one's super sorry about. Skipping over Agenda, the number two in my report for the moment, number three, the Wilmington-Tewksbury Chamber of Commerce is conducting a business open house out on the Common on Friday, July 26th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. This event is free to businesses and will feature current chamber members, local small business association representatives, local bank sponsors, and town staff, myself, who will be available to answer questions. Each business that's registered is eligible to receive a free food voucher for the What the Fork food truck. And to register, you can visit the Wilmington-Tewksbury Chamber website and select the event on the calendar. Next item, Berundi is going to be having their official ribbon-cutting grand opening on Wednesday, July 17th, at 12:00 PM this week. They've been open for a couple of months, but they're making it officially official that they're joining our business community. So anybody who wishes to stop by there and sample some of their offerings, feel free to do so. And last but not least, just returning to item number two on the memo. With multiple filings for electronic message board signs specifically related to virtual menu boards over the last few months, including this evening, I wanted to propose a potential bylaw amendment to exempt electronic message boards from special permitting requirements when they are menu boards to serve a drive-through for a commercial establishment. And I propose some language that could be applied for exempting these types of signs. Electronic message board signs which serve as menu boards for the purpose of communicating an establishment's available products and services with associated prices for commercial facilities with drive-through service. The electronic message board menu, excuse me, yes, the electronic message board menu must be located within the drive-through window pathway. So again, right now, the letter of the bylaw, these electronic virtual menu boards don't meet any other criteria other than what is required by special permit. Wanted to see if there was an appetite for the board to create that kind of exemption, seeing that we're probably going to see a lot of these static menu boards transition to virtual menu boards. If not, that's totally fine, but with the prevalence of particularly Dunkin' Donuts redoing a lot of their menu boards, I wanted to pose the question to you folks and get your thoughts.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts?
I have a, Mr. Vitale? So one issue I have, Alan, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a step in the right direction. Why come here if you don't have to? So my other concern is, and I think we're going to be facing this down the road with one of the Dunkin' Donuts that we discussed earlier, the Oakdale Plaza across from that Dunkin' Donuts that's there, they wanted to move it around the corner.
Yep.
And we did allow that striping in the road. But I do think they're going to find that cars are going to be backing a little bit up on 38, because it's around the corner, there's only three or four cars that can queue up in that location. I was going to bring it up to them tonight, but I don't see them here tonight, but maybe they will be coming in. But in an event like that, what does a customer do and what does the applicant do if they have issues with that, with the message board or something like that comes up down the road?
Yeah. So basically, at this point, the way it comes to you folks for approval is really for the message board itself. We're looking to make sure that the electronic message board sign meets the criteria laid out in the zoning bylaw, which does specifically relate to setbacks from the road, not necessarily where on the site it's situated, as long as it meets the setbacks for the road, the size requirements, and what have you. Otherwise, they're requesting waivers. Something that could alleviate that if we're not talking about, if we are talking about creating a pathway for some of these, that if they are replacing the virtual menu board in the same location where the previous static menu board was already installed, if it's one-to-one in the exact same location, perhaps that's where the exemption can be created. And if they do propose to move it anywhere else along the drive-through path, then they would still have to come in. That's a thought.
Okay. So along those same lines, I have been going to the Dunkin' Donuts on Chandler Street in the gas station, and I happened to notice the overhead sign limit was nine feet. I don't think that was been a consistent measurement in some of the other locations. I thought they were going higher than that, but it just happened to catch my eye because they had come in front of us before.
Yeah.
And I thought nine feet was a little low, but I mean, I don't know. So.
Yeah, my understanding is.
I don't know if they're consistent on that height-wise or not, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they make the determination, what the clearance needs to be for each of those. The bylaw only says that freestanding signs can't exceed 20 feet in height, and they're certainly well below that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think some of them might be 14 feet, but I'm not sure where, and perhaps we can ask the proponent who's here for one of them this evening, although that one is going to be wall-mounted and won't be necessarily subject to the same discussion points, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Obviously, we have measurement, dimensional, maximum allowable area for electronic sign for a typical property for advertising. I feel like we should still probably come to an agreement on what would be a maximum allowable size.
Sure.
For a menu board.
Mm-hmm.
Just so, because if we don't, we may end up with some, you know, I don't want them doing one giant double-height menu.
Yep.
And I also don't want them doing something that's, you know, eight feet wide and belongs at Gillette, so we should probably just try to find something that seems, and I think we've approved the ones at the several Dunkin' Donuts locations, so maybe that's a good, you know, good jumping off point. I think those were about as big as I would want a sign to be personally, so.
Sure.
But anyway, I just feel like we should have something in there that if they're going to go bigger than that, they should come back.
Yeah.
Because then that could actually become more of an intrusive presence or distraction of traffic.
Sure.
Or something of that nature.
Yeah, that's a really good point, to come up with some parameters, because then again, you can say, hey, in order to qualify for the exemption for it to be a menu board, these are the parameters we're looking at, and just like any other sign, if they want to be bigger, taller, wider, whatever, closer to the street, what have you, then there's still that special permit option. But this can kind of provide a more streamlined option for businesses who are just looking to upgrade old menu boards.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, a couple of comments on the, that I think we've had a little bit of a discussion on. So, you know, from like, let's just say a building permit standpoint, you know, like Boston, if you're, if you're putting new railings on your porch, you can get what's called a short form permit, as opposed to a long form permit, which you're tearing it down and you're doing structural repairs and so on and so forth. So I just don't know if it's, if creating another zoning reg is the pathway for that, like, we just had certain parameters for a simple iron-out, a simple remove-and-replace sign. Remove this sign, replace it with the same size, as long as it meets the common criteria. You being the, you know, the determining factor, whether it's permissible under this, whatever you might want to call it, as, you know, instead of creating another zoning, another layer of zoning. And part of the reason is because, just like Mr. Vitale said, I think the location of the sign board at the Dunkin's was probably not the best location for that sign board because of the queuing issue, I think, that they're inevitably going to have down there. And I'm not sure if that sign has been built yet or not.
No.
But, you know, they may be considering that as it is. But I think I would like for us as a board to maintain, to be able to have a look at the signage, the sign locations, and other factors other than just, but if it's a straight iron-out, I'm perfectly okay with that.
Yeah. So right now, the zoning bylaw doesn't allow for that, so we would have to do an amendment to some degree, and we can kind of incorporate some of the same provisions that are a part of minor site plan review, which does give a designee, in this case, me, the ability to review with town staff, including the building commissioner and town engineer. And if it looks like it meets the parameters for a minor review, then it gets processed that way, but it still leaves the door open that if there's something that looks like it requires discretion, it still gets referred to the planning board. So that would still require some new language in the zoning bylaw, but I'm happy to take that feedback and maybe figure out the last couple of menu boards that have been done, seeing what the dimensions are of those, and kind of putting something together for you folks to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think overall, just generally supportive of it. I think my only concern that hasn't been mentioned here yet is that if somebody wants to, if somebody has one that's facing the street and they kind of set it up to be double-duty as an electric-mounted sign, just to make sure that we don't fall into that sort of situation.
Okay.
It's all my questions.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, Mr. Chairman and I just had a conversation about two, also, I think down the road, we're going to have to be a little bit more in tune on the brightness of various signage, you know, not just sign boards, but other signs. So I think there's still some work to do and a little bit of learning on our end as far as, as far as those go. So I think it would be good for us to be able to review, you know, some of those sign boards.
Sure.
I'm not saying all of them, like I said, a simple, a simple remove-and-replace. I don't have a problem with that at all. We want to streamline that process, make our life easier, your life easier, and the applicants' life a little easier, too.
Yeah, I have no issue with it. I prefer to, you know, sort of recognize the progress, and this is sort of where things are going. So when we did the old one, you know, we were thinking in terms of something a lot different than this, but now it's gotten to the point, but this is replacing the old, you know, permanent signs.
Yeah.
The only thing I'd say, too, is, you know, we already have some stuff, I think, in the bylaw that has that sort of dual option, where it can be done at the desk, and then if it either can't, or the petitioner has some reason that they want to come in and ask for something, they have the ability to do that. So I mean, with the limitations, whatever we come up with for the parameters, and then there's either a kick-out that sends it over here, or the option to do so if they want to ask for something or whatever, that's fine. I have no issue with that. Otherwise, just assume, do it faster. I mean, there's no reason for something like that to wait a month.
Right.
Like when we have our summer meetings, because, you know, it's not exactly a family suite, but it's not far off.
Right.
I mean, the likelihood that we're going to say no to a message board unless you come in with something that's firing off fireworks, you know, we're probably not going to have a problem with it. So I would say just a little bit of leeway maybe on that, you know, let's not get too caught up on the, you know, replace exactly where the sign was before.
Sure.
Because I don't want people coming in here because they wanted to move it a foot.
Right.
Like, you know, some sort of wiggle room, you know, basically, you know, plus or minus a couple of feet of where the sign was, or.
Right. The idea would be that if someone is doing, wants to do something that would require a waiver or some sort of discretionary consideration, these would be for ones that are straightforward, and it's, you know, I'm certainly not going to exercise discretion as a staff member. That's for the planning board to decide. So if somebody's coming in, just like any other building permit, if they're building an addition on their house, they meet the setbacks and they do exactly what they're supposed to do. They don't have to go to a board. So I'll come up with some language for next time that we can look at, for sure.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you, Alex.
All right. That brings us to Agenda Item B, three, which is 325 Marshall Street slash Terramore Drive, bond release and as-built acceptance. Is there anybody here for that?
So because they came last time, and it was really left with the DPW to get the reports on how the storm water management system is functioning and get the final as-built, you have a letter in your packets from the town engineer noting that all of the criteria have been met and any discretionary requirements were granted before the street acceptance, before town meeting. If there are no additional questions, I think it's perfectly appropriate to accept the as-built as DPW has indicated in their letter and release the remainder of the bonds that they have.
Okay. How much is it?
So there is a, an as-built guarantee bond for $15,000, and then there is the remainder of the roadway bond that was reduced last year when they reached a certain level of binder and completeness of the work, and the remaining balance is $294,433.96.
Share that number again?
$294,433.96.
That's it.
Okay.
That's a lot of money.
Yes.
So we'll just go, Mr. Chairman, anything?
Nothing here.
No comments?
All right. Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. I think the project came out great. I have friends that live down there, and I drive through it regularly, and I think the homeowners association is in place now and handling everything, so, you know, I just, I think it came out great, and kudos to the builder and builders, whatever, and I'm all set, and would vote in favor of releasing the bond.
Mr. Duffy?
I feel the same way. I think it's a great project for the town. I think it came out very nice, and I'm good with release.
Chair is as well. So if they have a motion, we'll just do them together, the release of the $15,000 and the $294,433.96.
So I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we release the two bond amounts totaling $294,000, odd dollars, whatever it is, for the completion of the project and all conditions being met.
Yep.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. We're done. All right. That moves us on to Agenda Item C, 1699 Shaw Sheen Street, signed special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
It's all moved.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Once you get settled, if you give your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Campabasso. I am one of the business owners of the Dunkin' Donuts at 1699 Shaw Sheen Street in Tewksbury. We're here today. We are, I believe we were in front of you maybe a few months ago on an exactly similar matter, on a replacement of a digital menu board at the location. So what we're looking to do is, it's remodel time for us at that store. Dunkin' Donuts is requiring us to replace the current menu board, which is a manual one. It's been there for, I'd say, 10, 15 years. And we are looking to replace it with a wall-mounted electronic board in the same exact location at the end of the queue, and that's pretty much what we're here for today.
Okay. I'm just going to stick right to left. Mr. Chairman?
I think we've seen enough of these at this point. Looks like we have enough queuing. The only question I have is, what's your, what do you have for a sign board there now? I don't use that particular location, so.
It's just one of the old ones where you kind of open it up and you just put the manual, it's a, it's a wall-mounted sign.
It's wall-mounted, all right.
Yeah, it's wall-mounted.
This doesn't stick, does this stick out any further than the hard one?
I think these are thinner. I believe they're thinner, so they won't stick out any further.
That was my only concern, is if the edges of them hung out like wings, could somebody possibly clip one with a mirror or something?
Yeah, no, these are a lot tidier, a lot neater. They're not as clunky as the old ones.
And I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Latta?
I think likewise. I've seen a couple of these go up across town. Now they're a nice improvement. I'm in favor of them.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have been to your Dunkin' Donuts down there, and I actually will not go again to that one, and I'll tell you the reason. Because when you enter that drive-through, there's no exit to get out in the event of an emergency, or if something happens and you have to exit. Am I correct in that assumption?
Looking at the queue from here, I would probably say you're correct.
Yeah, because you come in the back of the buildings.
We do.
You know, and 12 cars, 12 cars is plenty, and I don't have a problem with that. The problem I have, and I was, I don't think I was here, I don't know if Mr. Johnson was, when they designed these.
Ancient.
Yeah, I think they are. So, because we've done that on one of the other sites in town, where we made them have a little bypass lane.
Yeah.
Obviously, you can't do that here because there's no room in the back.
Right.
So my other question to you is, is there any way of redesigning the access to that board? And I've looked at it. You'd have to drive through the parking lot and come back the other way.
Yeah, you're talking about do a loop around the other way?
Yeah. Would you come in, rather than going the right way you have it now, is if you go left and come around?
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't, I mean, I know it's pretty busy, but.
Yeah. I mean, we don't own the building, but I mean, I would say, I don't know what that would do to the available parking for the, for the restaurant there. I mean, that parking lot is pretty chammed.
Yeah, I know that.
That's always been the issue, at least with the landlord. It's definitely doable, I would say that, but it's just, it's going to be at the expensive parking.
Yeah, well, the message board can stay in its location. If you, I just think if you redirected that line of access in, I don't know if it would affect too many cars during the morning, part of the day, in May, and later afternoon, or so forth and so on, but it would alleviate, I think, some people's anxiety if they go in there knowing what they're going into.
Right, I'm sure.
You know, and I went into it, I'm like, oh my God, if I want to get out here, I can't.
Yeah.
Not for anything other than the fact that if it's a medical emergency, or somebody has to leave, or whatever reason, they can't.
Yeah.
There's no way to get out.
Right.
I mean, maybe they could beep their horn, maybe people will stop moving, I don't think so. But in case you don't want to wait in line, because we've waited long enough, I mean, I don't know if that would be an improvement. I mean, accessibility wise, I think it would be, but whether you'd have to give us different room for that, but.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a complete overhaul design. I would think we'd have to come back. If it's possible, I guess anything's possible, but it's probably a longer discussion with the landlord.
So I don't think it's any, too much of an expense, because what's the expense?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you're driving through the parking lot and coming back, the fence back there, you can run along, run along the fence.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a driveway, drive area there. I've been there, so I went through it.
I don't, I, where the menu board is now on that jog in the back, I just don't see how you can get a car squared off with that by, without just completely relocating that menu board and putting a, you know, putting a, what, put it into the ground and putting it out somewhere else into the parking field.
Yeah.
If we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Because I mean, if you, if, may I?
Sure.
Yeah, so if you, it's kind of on a jog in the back, which is good because nobody sees it, the road can't see it, but the menu board's there.
Yeah.
So to come in here, and I just don't know. You'd have to build a menu board somewhere out here so people can hit it. We've got, we've got a lot of drive-throughs that do this.
Yeah.
You'd have to put the menu board over here.
That wouldn't be a bad idea either, because it allows you more time from the start of the menu board to the window.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know if that would be something you want to look at. I don't have a problem with the menu board. Any upgrade to the menu board is great. I just think for the residents of town, anybody that uses that, that would be a welcome addition.
Yeah.
So they have access out in the event they have something comes up. I don't know if it's ever been like that, or anything, if it ever happened, but I hate to see it happen to somebody in there, and then next thing you know, we're in trouble.
Right.
If we have an opportunity to possibly change it with minimal amount of work.
Another five years, they're going to be doing a little bit more, it's possible. I just, again, it's probably a longer discussion with the landlord. He'd probably lose parking. I don't know, but, you know, we could certainly, we could certainly take a look at that in the future.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Looked at, I'm all set. I just, I had to bring that up.
Yeah.
Because I had been in there before, but I pick my spots now. Unfortunately, that's your business, you know, and I do.
Next time might be a little easier to do that. I think this one's a little tough to do that, but in the future, I mean, we're certainly open.
I was just thinking, if you're going to upgrade the menu board, that may be an avenue to look at and say, hey, you know, even if you have to come back.
Right.
You know, I think everybody here is supportive of the menu board.
Yeah.
In that location, I think, has anybody ever been in that Dunkin' Donuts spot? You know, I mean, I think I'm talking correctly, from my, in my own opinion, but.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'll say is I've had a lot of discussion with that landlord over the parking over there, and it's just, it's a, it's a fight for parking.
That should be alleviated now that the next lot is being developed, I would think.
And that has been something they've discussed with us about maybe reconfiguring things, but that's just really not within our control at this point, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I see you're just looking for a couple of waivers there?
Yes.
On the sign board?
Yes.
Is the sign board, the only thing I, piece of info I didn't see there, is it going exactly, or?
Exactly.
Plus or minus where the other one is right now?
Exactly where the other one is.
Yes, okay. And so, I mean, you know, that building is, I don't even know how old. It's, it's many, many decades old, and, and, you know, to try to, try to, you know, try to make it meet today's.
Yeah.
You know, the wishes of today's board, it might be a little difficult, but, you know, I mean, I think that if, if that became an absolute, because at least now, you know, after you pick up your coffee, which I did there today, you just, you know, it's one car at a time going out into that parking lot.
Yeah.
The whole lot is less than two acres, you know, and that's all the parking for employees and businesses. And I think the, the building next door, even though it might be, you know, you know, same ownership, I don't know that that is, you know, can be part of a.
Where employees are parking there.
I think, yeah.
I mean, what we've been told is it's supposed to alleviate the parking. That's at least what, you know, maybe that opens up some opportunities, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with any of the four waivers for, for the sign board. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chair is all set as well. Open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience really questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
To make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second. A motion for what, Mr. Chairman, now?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, second.
A motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. As to the waivers, do we have a motion on the waivers?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the waivers for this signed special permit.
All right. We have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. As to the signed special permit itself, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the signed special permit at 1699 Shaw Sheen Street.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Good luck.
Great. Thank you, folks.
Moving on to Agenda Item D, as referenced earlier, 792 Main Street has requested that this be continued to our 8/19 meeting. We currently have it penciled in for 7:05. Do I have a motion to continue this till 7:05 on the 19th of August?
It's all moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. That brings us to Agenda Item E.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to back up for one second. I will be out of town visiting my new grandson on August 19th. my new grandson on August 19th.
Congratulations.
Anybody that's going to require, you know, four out of five or whatever, I just want to make sure they get proper notification that I will not be available.
Very good, all right.
Make sure you send pictures.
That, that brings us to Agenda Item E, 34 Lenica Road, Family Suite Special Permit, do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, do we have anybody here for this? Come on up. Once you guys get settled, just give you names for the record, and then the floor is yours. Tony Fiola?
Hi, Larissa Radiker.
So, pretty much looking for, seek a special permit for a family suite, we're going to need family to stay and caretakers to stay with us, girlfriend has stayed for terminal breast cancer, so we're going to need some family assistance, currently have three kids upstairs with us, so need some additional space in the house to help with caretake.
All right.
Very sorry.
All right, we're going to go left, right this time, so Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so it, it looks like the entire family suite you're going to build out in the basement of the, of the main house there?
Correct.
Yeah, I was just curious, and I know this is more of a building department issue than, than us, but, so I show that, you show the main entrance, is that like a bulkhead? Like stairs going down into the basement there?
It's, yeah, correct.
And, and are you still required to put that escape window in?
Correct.
Oh yeah, no kidding, huh? Okay, I was curious about that, I thought if you had one, and that was, you know, you had the two egress, of course, you know, that's why we have a building inspector in town. No, it looks like a pretty nice layout to me, the common area is, looks to be that storage area in the basement there, and so that's also, that also is your second egress to the upstairs area?
Yes.
And then to the outside in emergency?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now it looks like a pretty good layout, a good design, who drew the plan? Did you draw them yourself?
No, um...
Yeah, an architect drew them?
Yeah, an architect, yeah.
Yeah, nicely considered drawings, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I am, one question I have is, so the access into the family suite, you're, you're coming into the, into the bedroom?
Bedroom or potential living space area, but potentially a bedroom, yes.
Okay, any way of changing that, so the bedroom maybe flip-flopped or something? I know there's plumbing issues and all that stuff, but I didn't know if that was, I mean, you're walking into the bedroom from the outside or...
I can try that.
Well, I don't know, that was just one of my observations.
Walking in from the outside?
Yeah.
Goes into the lip, like the living area, not the bedroom?
It depends how you, somebody would set it up, it could be one or the other.
Okay, it says bedroom here, that's why I look at the plans and it says bedroom, and the escape window's right there as well, and the stairs going from the main entrance coming in shows you're going in to the bedroom, so that's why I asked you.
It's how, yeah, that's how the architect drew it up, but, I mean, I guess it could be arranged either way in a sense.
Well, you might write out the issue with the plumbing is why, is what I said, you know, trying, trying to, I mean, I don't have a problem not going to be living there, but, you know, if you, if you could avoid having to walk into the bedroom from the outside, but, you know, hey, so my other question is, are there any other windows in the, in the basement that...
There is, there is a, next to where the escape window is?
Yeah.
To, if you're, it's on that, on that same wall, and then adjacent on the...
Kitchen?
In the kitchen, there's one there, and then there's two in the bathroom.
So you've got to put them in, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, because I know, being in the basement, you have to be so, so high off to get access out, so, but, you know, I love the idea of bringing a family member in, take care of the family and help out as well, so with that, I'm all set, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one more quick? This is only a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's nothing in the zoning that makes that happen, but a lot of ADUs and a lot of new construction ADUs, that is, people, people are coming in for future elevators, I don't know what kind of shape your, your rotors are going to be in, but I see the bulkhead stairs as a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a difficulty in and out there, and just something, just food for thought for you guys.
Thank you. Mr. Lazzari?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, yeah, generally supportive, I think my only question is, any of the, the storage areas finished, or are they all?
Um, no, no.
All right, just one other question.
Mr. Champ?
No, the, my fellow board members have already pointed out, I also thought it was, might, might become uncomfortable later to have the entry coming right into the bedroom, but if you flip some things around, your entry might be coming into the bedroom from the upstairs of the house anyway, so, looks like you're making the best out of the space that you have, unless, as you mentioned, you want to rearrange all the plumbing. The, I'm curious, out of the windows that are available, why did you choose the escape window that was so close to a stairway leading out already?
It just made sense for when, you know, easier access for firefighters when they enter the space, the window next to it is kind of like a, in a corner, sort of say, so that was the next close access, so it just made sense to put it there, if you're, you know, approaching from the walkway, that's the first entry spot.
Okay, again, this is probably more under building department purview than my own, but I thought the, I, when I see escape window, I assume that's something for, like, if a stairway was on fire itself or blocked somehow, that it would provide an additional egress, but in this case, you have two egresses already pretty far apart, I was curious why putting an escape window basically right at one of the egress points, as opposed to maybe the one in the back of the bedroom or the one in the front, which is now serving the dining room, living room. Again, not really my purview, but if, if the point is for the residents that are inside to have multiple means of escape, if you're in the bedroom and somehow trapped, the window and the stairs are probably both blocked, so you're going to go out the door, and then hopefully, you know, your next point of egress could be that window or through the other door to the upstairs.
And my contractor told me, escape windows are essentially also for firefighters to be able to gain access in the event of emergency, so he recommended I put it there, I mean, if I have to add another one in another location?
I just was curious what the background was behind it, so, but other than that, I had no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the chair is all set as well, open up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, as to the family suite special permit itself, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we pull the applicant, application for a family suite special permit.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous, good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. That brings us to Agenda Item F, 118 Lumber Lane, Use Special Permit, do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, gentlemen, once you're settled, give you names for the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening, my name's Paul Ross, attorney representing the landlord of 118 Lumber Lane, Joseph Phelan, and with me is the tenant.
John Iorion, J&amp;M Floor Coverings.
Good evening, we are here requesting a use special permit for warehouse use for this, for half of this building, so 118 Lumber Lane is a large existing warehouse-style building, it's been in use for quite a long time, the tenant, J&amp;M Floor, is going to take over half of the building, 9,000 square feet, we have a tenant currently in the other half of it, their use is staging flooring materials to be used on projects that they, that they take on a contract and have subcontracts to installation work for, so it's, it's a warehouse-style use, where they're stockpiling materials not necessarily for, for distribution, but for bringing them to job sites. There is some work that needs to be done so that they can use this half of the building, and the landlord will be pulling up building permit for that work, and that is shown on the sketch that we included in the application, there'll be some bathrooms, a utility sink, and a, and a single stall shower installed, so that, that permit will be an owner's permit, where they will do the work if we're granted a special permit. After that, the tenant does not need any other work, so there'll be a, a no-work permit submitted for his use with much the same material you have in front of you now. After we submitted our application, Alex provided some comments on it, one of them was related to parking. The other tenant in the building occupying 9,000 square feet has 18 spaces dedicated to lease to them, which is twice the number that they're required at nine, and then J&amp;M Floors will also have 18 spaces dedicated to their use, again, twice as many as required by the zoning code. We submitted a existing conditions plan that we had for the property, and I apologize because you probably have a very small printout out of it, I have a larger one here if anyone would like it, the site has 77 spaces currently, so 36 minus, deducted from 77 leaves quite a few extra spaces on the parcel, so we, we certainly have enough parking. One of the other questions raised was where deliveries would be made to this portion of the building, there's currently an overhead door and a man, and a pass door at the end of the building furthest from East Street, and in the sketch I provided, I actually marked that up to show you where that is, if you'd like copies, I can pass them out. So just to clarify the changes that we made to this plan to update it for today, I circled in red the section where the overhead door is shown, all deliveries will be made to that location, delivery timing will correspond to the tenant's hours of operation, in the application, we noted, I think it was seven third, excuse me, eight to five was in the application, and the tenant would like to work from 7:00 to 4:30, noted that in red as well, so other than that, that's the only changes we had to the plan, and that's all I have, we have the tenant here, if you have any specific questions as to his operations, and our, oh, excuse me, our application actually details parking requirements and, and daily trips, there'd be deliveries by box truck during the day, most of the material going out goes out by van, installation installers' vans, there are only two employees, two cars for employees per day, and that's about it, if they have any questions, please let me know.
All right, what's up, Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ross, it's good to see things moving in the right direction for Lumber Lane, so a new business coming into town, which is another great win-win for the town, and, and in my eyes, a nice father and son team working together is, is what it's all about, you know, so, you know, I, I, reading all the notes and the reports, I have no, no problem with the cars and trucks coming in, and, and only two employees on site, hours of operation are fine, the 7:00 AM to 4:30 is fine, it's a commercial establishment, and, you don't sell retail at all, correct?
No.
No, just commercial people coming in, contractors and so forth and so on, so with that, I'm all set, and signage, are you going to put signage on the existing lumber, liquidated sign, lumber lane?
At some point, yes.
Okay, yeah, fine, okay, with that, I'm all set, thank you.
And there'll be a separate permit filed for the signage when it comes that time.
Mr. Champ?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
So Lazzari?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick questions, so the deliveries are going to go in the right side of the building, as you're facing the, the narrow end of the building, it says Lumber Lane on it?
If you're facing the center of the long building, so the long wall of the building, far right, which is the furthest off of East Street?
Sure.
Is the entrance for this tenant.
Okay.
The other end is for the anchor plus, cables plus, excuse me, tenant.
Okay, understood, okay, so I, I guess I would just ask one thing, I did a little quick drive-by today, and this is just for, for you, really, I noticed when you pull out of the easement there, the, the driveway easement, the line of sight, those shrubs seem to be kind of getting a little overgrown there, so there's a, if you're trying to pull back out onto Lumber Lane, the, if you're, and you're looking to your left there, those, there's a whole line of shrubs, and they're, they're beautiful, don't get me wrong, but, you know, I think they, they're getting a little oversized and they impact line of sight pulling out, and if you're going to have folks driving in and out and picking up their, their materials and so on and so forth, you know, you don't want to create a little, even if you cut back the first four or five, six bushes, whatever, your landscape and things there, you know what I mean, just to kind of improve the line of sight there a little bit, that's my only concern, if I could ask that.
And if those, those shrubs are between the exit from 118 and the signage for 120, I believe that's...
Correct.
Okay, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, right in the mid, there's like a little curbing, curved area, running right down parallel with Lumber Lane there, and it has that, that whole line of shrubs in it, so if we could just kind of manage that, that line of shrubs a little bit, just to, you know, make, make sure you maintain a, a good line of sight for vehicles coming in and out of that, of that accessway, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, so I'm all set as well, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, bring it back to the board, what is the pleasure of the board?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing?
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, do we have a motion on the use special permit?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reapprove the special permit at 118 Lumber Lane.
Are we, are we going to include the, the two A and B that Ms. Lauter suggested?
Yes, no, no problem with that, Paul?
I'm sorry, A and B. No problem at all, both of those we, we would agree to anyway, there'd be a building permit pulled by the owner for the bathroom renovations, and the tenant submits a no-work permit for zoning compliance, and we've been doing that for all of the 120 Lumber Lane years.
Okay, good, all right. The only, the only other one I've just, since it's not in any, other than what we just said here, that, you know, we include the comments about the parking spaces that are dedicated to, that's specific to this unit, I presume they're probably listed in the leasing agreement?
They are.
So could we get a copy of that sent to the office so we can go in the file, please? So let that as a condition that that will be sent in, but doesn't need to hold it up, just, you know, get that in so we have it for the file, all right, I'm sorry, thank you, so we have a motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item G, so this one's going to take a little explaining first, so we have this to us on a remand, which is to say that it's coming back to us after some litigation, or the beginnings of litigation, I'll let everybody know that some of the discussions for this were held in executive session, the minutes and whatnot from that will be released as those are required, and, you know, as is appropriate, if anybody wants to see them once they do come out, but that's sort of where we are, and for logistic purposes, best way to sort of explain this is, this, we're sort of stepping back to the point, just after we closed the hearing, and the point where the board would have been discussing either granting or not granting the, the permit, and that's where we're sort of picking it up, and for our purposes, in time, Mr. Fattalia was not here that night, therefore, Mr. Fattalia cannot participate in the discussions that we have for this tonight, and our votes that we take pertaining to it for the same reason, so, it's not like a recusal, so Mr. Fattalia does not have to leave the board for this, it's just, he just won't be part of our discussion, okay? All right, so... I'll just go around the table, everybody's had a chance to see this, so, Mr. Champ, any comments or anything that you wish to make at this time?
Uh, no.
Mr. Lazzari?
No comments.
Yeah, I'm not, do we do, I mean, because we're not taking any more testimony, do we have them announce that they're here, I mean, we're not...
No.
Yeah, because this is, again, for our purposes, you can sit, we're just not going to discuss, because we're picking this up...
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, I think that it would be appropriate to waive the public reading of the remand notice?
Okay.
And procedurally, then, everything else...
So I'll take one step back then, can I have a motion to waive the public reading for the remand hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, now everything I said before comes now, it's just shifted, so, Mr. Champ is all set, Mr. Lazzari, did you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no comments.
All right, Mr. Duffy?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the chair does not either, we've all seen these, we were all part of the discussions that have us with this, we got 11, the 11 topics, oh, actually, it's 11 plus the four at the beginning, I don't know, let's just explain it.
So it's the four waivers that were requested the first time around, plus the 11 conditions, which amounts to, the first eight conditions were all from the original public hearing, and the nine, 10, and 11 were all discussed and negotiated through executive session and through town council and the applicants' council.
So just so we're clear too, on, on the, on all of these, it's the remand hearing of the site plan approval?
The special permit and land disturbance permit.
All, all three of them?
All three approvals, yes, just for consistency and clarity, make sure that all of them are taken care of at once.
Good enough, all right, all right, so with no questions or comments on these, take a motion on the four waivers first, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the additional four waivers.
So we'll grant the four waivers as listed, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that's four zero, then to the site plan approval with the conditions as listed, are all 11, do I have a motion on the site plan approval?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, that we accept the site plan as noted.
All right, that we grant the site plan approval with the conditions as listed, so we have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four zero, that brings us to the special permit, do I have a motion to grant the special permit?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the special permit.
All right, we have the special permit, motion made, we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four zero, that leaves us with the land disturbance permit, we have a motion on the land disturbance permit?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the land disturbance permit.
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four zero. All right, we're all set? All right, all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks. That brings us to agenda item correspondence. We didn't have any correspondence, so we will move to agenda other business not known at the time of the posting of this agenda. Does anybody have such an item they wish to discuss this evening?
Just one small thing, I don't, I haven't never filed for a family special suite, but we've certainly seen a wide range of application packets. Does the town provide any sort of guidance as far as the types of plans that they should submit, existing plans, elevations, proposed new plans, proposed new elevations, things like that?
Sure.
So we've had a few that have really been tough to kind of get our heads around and we're really lacking in information, and obviously, we're very lenient, understanding that there's a lot of reasons why these family specials suites are needed, but it would be nice to actually have a certain amount of, of, you know, reviewable info.
Right, but one of the, one of the answers I think to this question is going to be is because this is sort of a disconnected thing in that we're saying it's okay and then the building department takes over, and otherwise, if they bring in, I mean, ultimately, they do have to come up with the real plans to submit to the town, it's just when they come into us, they're just not, you know, have them go that far before they've even come to see us to get the okay, I think is the reason we don't typically.
That's certainly part of it, so there's actually a couple of different moving parts here. Part of it is that, number one, yes, technically speaking, the homeowners are coming, or the contractors in some cases are coming here to request permission for the use to exist in the home, so having the layouts or any degree of plans is a bit of a bonus, and I agree that it does help with the visuals for when you folks are considering it. The other part of it is that with building permits, if there's no plumbing and electrical involved and homeowners are then allowed to apply for the permits as homeowners, they sign a homeowner's affidavit, they take responsibility of the project, and depending on the level of handiness, they may actually do the work themselves, and that also contributes to the level of detail in the plans, so some of the ones where, particularly if it's an addition, of course, because they have to get new architectural plans showing how it ties into the house, they're obviously doing all new plumbing, electrical, gas, all that kind of stuff. Those plans tend to be far more detailed, but when folks are converting existing space within their homes already, or sometimes codifying units that were never properly permitted, very often, they're pulling those, those permits as a homeowner and they're doing those much more rudimentary floor plans and drawings indicating where the connections to the main house are, and, you know, this is going to be a bedroom now, and we're putting up walls and making a closet and that kind of thing, so I, I think that accounts for the very wide range of, I don't want to say quality of plans, level of detail in some of the plans that we receive, again, correspondingly, if it's a, if it's an addition, much more complicated work involved, you're going to see that, you know, those fancy architectural plans that some of them submit. And on the other side, if a homeowner is converting a lower level or half of their house or whatever, you know, a former addition that was a garage and they're just kind of putting up walls and, and keeping everything else the same, those plans tend to be a little less detailed, but those are all really dependent on the level of work that's going to be involved in constructing or converting existing space into the family suite.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, I, I agree, and, and I was actually going to ask that question, and I agree 100% like why would you put the escape window like right at the bottom of the bulkhead stairs? 100%, probably, I, I mean, I'm not really up to today's date on the code, but I'm pretty familiar with it, and, and I just don't know if that's required or not, but I also had some concerns about the stairs going up into a, you know, almost a dead end, basically, you know what I mean, coming up into, into a, into an area into three bedrooms, so, but that being said, when I looked at it, I said, you know what, that's an issue that, that the building department is going to look at, and they're the ones that are going to make a determination, and if any changes have to be made to the drawings to, to make it compliant with the building code, then that's, then the building department is going to, is going to have that, have the applicant make those changes and, and submit them with the plan, so I feel pretty comfortable approving even, like, like Alex said, very rudimentary drawings, because that only gets them to the counter at the building department and, and then it's, you know, then they have to go from there, so I think we're, like, like Alex says, we're just approving the use, not, not whether it, you know, it's code compliant or, or what.
So all we're really looking for is basically confirmation that it will be family living there and?
That it's contiguous with the main house and that it's not going to exceed the 1,000 square feet, that's ultimately the baseline of what you folks are looking for, but generally speaking, the building commissioner is going, it's like Mr. Duffy said, it's not going to go past the counter if they don't provide the level of detail the commissioner's looking for.
Well, because, I mean, some people, obviously, they're moving forward with this and paying for quality drawings and all of that, other people, other families maybe just want to do the hand sketch, because if we don't approve it, they're not out any money.
Sure.
So I was just trying to understand some of the background as far as what happens before the packet reaches your desk.
Yeah, it really depends on what level.
And that clarifies it a lot, is they're really just here to say, you know, this is my sick mother-in-law, she's coming home because we need to take care of her.
Sure, yeah, it really depends exactly when they come to me in the process. Some people are very proactive, they know they want to do it, they speak to the building department months ahead of even thinking they want to do something like this, and they'll immediately say, yeah, we don't have our drawings yet, but, you know, go get ready for the planning board, or they already show up to both counters with completely drawn architectural plans, and then, you know, they can have the building commissioner's review done simultaneously with this filing, and then they're really off to the races when they get through this portion of the process, but, yeah, that does account for the, the level of detail you see, because it is very dependent on when I meet them in the process.
Okay, I really appreciate the clarification, that, that makes us a little bit easier as far as I kind of know what lane I need to stay in now, and so I'm good, thank you.
All right, anyone else with any other business not known at the time? The only one I would ask, and it's not even an ask, maybe just to send them a note, North Street, the corner, North Street, 133?
Oh, the, yes.
So they, they have a bunch of trees and whatnot, I suspect that those are ones they're looking to put in in other places where they were supposed to do them as a result of last meeting, which I wasn't here for, but I drive by it all the time and they've already got three dead ones on that line of the back line, so before they all look like the ones from CBS, well, Walgreens, Walgreens, you know, I'd like them to get at them and?
Yes.
I assume they will be getting at them?
Yes, so the building commissioner has been by a couple of times during routine inspections and just driving by on his way to other inspections, and he had, we have been keeping in contact with the owner and his representatives to make sure that he understands that these things need to be adhered to and they're not a light suggestion, so we're keeping close tabs on it.
Okay, that was it, just because I noticed it three times in the last two days when I drove by. Other than that, we're all set with other business? All right, moving on to adjournment, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, we'll see you on August 19th. Good night.